Okay, good evening. I would like to call this regular Board of Education meeting in West Dallas, West Milwaukee to order, please. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ms. Curran, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Suzette, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Sujeki.
Here.
Ms. Emmens.
Here.
Mr. Keller.
Here.
Mrs. Justum.
She's in the back.
Is here.
So is Mr. Lee.
Mr. Yustruck.
Here.
Ms. Curran.
Here.
Mr. Lee is also here.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
President's signature.
The President. Proper notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the open meeting laws of the state of Wisconsin. Board members and Dr. Whitman, any modifications or additions to tonight's agenda?
No changes.
Board members, seeing none, we will move on to public comments. A reminder during our public comments section, please try to limit your comments to three minutes and the Board will provide answers directly to you or at the next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, we do not answer questions or debate issues during public comment. Cindy Barbian. Oh, and I forgot to say, please give your name and address, but I know Cindy knows that.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Barbian. I live at 2937 South 102nd Street. Wow, it's been awhile since I've been here. And the main reason I wanted to come to the meeting tonight is I have a question and I know that you cannot answer it, but I am hoping that it can be answered subsequently down line. I've lived in the district about 95 percent of my life. Since the 1991 school year, my children have been enrolled in schools in West Dallas until the youngest graduated in 2004. So I am asking this question primarily as a citizen. I'm not even a grandparent in the district. Over the years, the West Dallas, West Milwaukee School District has brought forth several referendums. In that time, I have supported every one. I have never voted no to a referendum in this district. I'm kind of proud of that because I believe in education. Many of you know me and you know my commitment to education. I do have a question, though. Last April, I voted yes, so truly, I don't care. But last April, there was a referendum that failed. And the other day, I was listening to Jeff Wagner, don't ask me why, and he was discussing the fact that West Dallas had this failed referendum, but we were getting a loan for more than a referendum from the state of Wisconsin. And I'm just wondering why, since 1990, I have supported all of these referendums, if y'all could just go to the state and get them on anyhow? I'm a little confused. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That's the only individual we had to sign up, but is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the Board at this time? Name and address, please, for the record.
The name is Richard Temple, 2827 114th Street, very near Parkway. My question is primarily about Parkway, and I know you're not going to answer any of those questions this evening, but I would like to bring up a number of issues that we have. You know, this thing that seems to be behind cloak and dagger kind of routine, very much hidden until all of a sudden, one of neighbors finds out about it and comes down the road and tells everyone. But the concerns that I have are basically that I believe Parkway is, I believe, being utilized now under a special use permit that is for offices. And now we want to import a bunch of children, of which we don't know what the purpose of this is. In other words, I understand there's some are special needs children, some are problem children, socially unacceptable kids, and the ages are from kindergarten through 12, through 12th grade. And I don't know if those are accurate or not, but you know, we, people that are within our neighborhood, I think, have moved there to have a quiet neighborhood, one where that we take a lot of pride in our homes. And if you're going to import a bunch of problem children, I think that's going to certainly disrupt our way of life. And for that purpose, I would be totally, totally, totally opposed to it. And where are these kids coming from? I understand they're coming out of Racine and Kenosha for the most part. Why don't they take care of them in their own backyard? I don't think we export our children, do we, the problem children? My daughter is a special ed teacher here and I know she deals with many of them, or a few of them. But I guess those are my questions and concerns. Is the quality of life of our neighborhood, the security of our neighborhood, and the livability of our neighborhood, for which we pay a great deal of taxes down there? You know, tax bills are over seven grand. And we didn't buy there to have a bunch of kids running around, especially problem children. If they got problems, maybe this is not the right location to stick them in the middle of residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just for the, for just clarification, for Richard and any other public that might be listening, we're having a community information session tomorrow at Parkway.
I understand.
Right, about, we can't get into a conversation, but I just, it's for you and just for the public, too, that may be listening. To share, I think, more accurate information, some of the information you've shared is still kind of reflective of rumors that have kind of surrounded this, and I think residents that come tomorrow will feel a lot better about what we're presenting once you get all of the facts. Yeah, so make sure you come, 6:30 to 7:30 at Parkway.
Should I leave, what did you say? I understand they will give additional modifications, special use to them, to do what they want to do, is that correct?
Yes. That's correct, yeah.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board at this time? Name and address, please.
Thanks, Jeff. I'm Dorian Temple, 2820 South 114th Street, West Dallas, Wisconsin. I am also going to speak about the same thing Dick just talked about. Three-year-olds through 12th grade is a very concerning thing for me also, because you're talking 49 students and you've got all that grade level. I don't think that's a good mixture. And I mean, how many people are they going to need to use to do whatever they do? The building is, I went there as a child, I went there K through six, and I know that, you know, it's, and I know it's been redone a couple of times because of the, when we generously donated its use to the fire department and they came in and used it while the other building was being built, and then, of course, they found all these things wrong and we had to fix it, which is fine. But anyway, that's one of my concerns. And then, the other concern is that they're going to use it this year for that, and they're going to change the special use permit, which they have now kindergarten through fourth grade, and they have the park and rec to be able to be using it. So then they're going to use it for three-year-olds through 12th grade. What's going to happen the next year? Are they going to bring up more children from other areas and just turn it into more and more of a school? We had problems with that about 20 years ago when Dick and I first moved in there. Kurt went and put children in from some other area that we didn't know about, just pushed them in there, and all of a sudden, we got this little thing in our front porch to plant, coming to be welcomed into the Parkway School District, Parkway School area, to see what was going on down there. And we find out that they don't even have a special use permit to be in there. And one of the neighbors went to the City Hall and found out, and the kids were gone in a few weeks. Stuff like this happens, this is not right. And I, you know, I will definitely be there tomorrow night, as all of you know me, I think most of you know me, and you know, you know, you came in and I was sitting in the front chair. But we are not happy about this situation, and there are many other people that are not happy as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call for anyone that would like to address the Board. Just a reminder again, name and address, please.
Good evening. I am Sue Doyle, the Director of Special Education and Pupil Services for CISA-1. We came this evening, myself and Kathy Brooks, the Associate Director, just to hear some concerns. We will be at the listening session tomorrow night as well. I just would like to take a brief minute to say thank you for sharing your concerns. I very quickly will say we are not bringing in students from Racine, Kenosha, some of the larger urban areas. We are supporting students in kindergarten through 12th grade in a variety of the classrooms because it is set up like a school. So we will go into more of those specifics tomorrow night about our programs and how we support our students with disabilities, and we're happy to answer more questions then. But I at least wanted to introduce myself and Kathy, and also reassure you that we intend to be good neighbors, if given that opportunity, that you will not see students loitering on the streets, doing anything illegal. There's nobody that we educate that has had a felony. So I know, again, we can go into details tomorrow night, but I wanted to just quickly dispel some of your immediate concerns and invite you tomorrow night, and we look forward to sharing more then. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll do one more last call because that last, last call, we didn't get one, I don't want to cut anybody off that would like to address us. Seeing no one approaching the podium, we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report, please.
Okay, thank you. So 7.1 legislative update, Joint Finance is meeting right now on the education budget. And so we've had some updates today. It's largely what we've been hearing all along from the budget process, and the board members have got bogged down really because of the transportation portion of the budget. But the $200 and then the $205 per people increase is still in the conversation. There are some changes that we anticipated that would change the income eligibility limits, meaning moving them up for voucher schools, so more parents become eligible to receive vouchers, so that's, we'll have to watch and see what the impact is for us. And then there's still some things that I didn't have enough time really to study on the Opportunity Schools program, and some of the changes that they're proposing there, which is really a targeted effort to influence kind of the lowest performing schools and districts in the state. And so that's a piece we'll watch, but they're working through those things. I didn't see anything, at this point, that seemed like a significant surprise. Some grant funds potentially that I think we'd be eligible for and would apply for for mental health needs for students, so that's still in the budget, and that was a commitment that a number of legislators and the governor had made. So that's encouraging. So we're going to continue to watch all of those things as this moves. I think there'll probably be lots more information in the next couple of days, right? So we'll keep the Board posted, and as things evolve, we'll get some things up and out to our parents. There's nothing new at the federal level at this point. They're busy, you know, worrying about what's happening in Texas, and our hearts and minds and prayers are with families in Texas because schools are wildly disrupted there right now and will be for a really long time. I was watching it and tried to put my superintendent hat on going, what would I do with that? So, yeah, really thinking about it. So in terms of congratulatory resolutions, we have nothing this evening. Updates and information items, real quick. There were no public comments on August 14th. We're getting ready to go for school. School starts on Friday. We're one of, a number of districts in the area that start on Friday and go to school for one day and then, you know, everybody's working so hard, we give them three days off. We've had, I've had a lot of people making jokes at my expense about that. But Tulsa starts on Friday, there are other districts that made the same decision that we did, and unfortunately, I was hedging a little bit, thinking that we would get relief from the September 1st start date, and then we'd be able to shift it. But the calendar is set, so we're going to go on Friday, and you know, I was talking to Beth about it, and she said, "Don't worry, Marty, kids will be there, the parents can't wait to get them out of the house." So, right, so we're ready to go. And there's still, there's the usual small things in transportation that are getting cleaned up, but it's nothing like last year where, you know, we had major kind of breakdown in systems. But there's always kind of regular hiccups when you start the organization up when it's not running, and then suddenly, you've got to get back to having, you know, 9,000 kids and 1,000 employees all kind of going in the right direction again. I already mentioned the CISA-1 information session, so that's tomorrow night at 6:30. And then enrollment is promising right now. Again, we still have some no-shows that we're going to come out of this, but we built the budget at 8,811 kids, and right now, we're at 8905. So we're getting to be about 100 kids ahead of projection, which is encouraging. And we'll see kind of, as we get closer to Friday, and then once, really into next week is when things settle down, you know, a week from Friday. Third Friday comes really fast, it's after only really two weeks of school this year, when we'll have our final counts. And that's my update this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Whitman? Okay, we'll move on to the Board President's Report, which is just the calendar for upcoming meetings. After tonight's regularly scheduled meeting, we have a workshop on employee sick time and school showcase presentation discussions. Then next two weeks, Monday, September 11th, we have a regular Board of Education at 6:00. Monday, September 18th, is normally a workshop night, but that will be the evening that we will do our new teacher meet and greet at 5:30, and then following that at 6:00 will be the public hearing on the 2017, 2018 budget. And then on Monday, September 25th at 6, we have a regular Board of Education meeting. And I just want to point out to Board members that October 17th is the WASB meeting at Country Springs. There will be a pre-meeting workshop on the school budget and the implications for school districts. That starts at 4:00, if you're interested in that, the dinner, and then the presentation, and the program begins at 6:00 that evening. Any Board members have anything? This is kind of where we share with the community also. Sue.
I'm back in action. I know you guys have missed all of that. Our past Board President, Joanne Whitke, has put together a program on heroin and opioid task force. And she is having a Knowledge is Power, the Power to Save Lives presentation. That would be Monday, September 18th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Nathan Hale High School. And Nathan Hale High School is located at 116th and Lincoln Avenue. This is a free event, and we encourage parents and community members that are concerned about alcohol, well, actually, it's not alcohol, it's drugs. They are going to have a variety of different information. They'll have information about painkillers and marijuana, but it's opium and heroin that they'll be, will be the focus. In addition to that, the West Dallas has what's called the Teen Replica Room, and you will be able to hear more about the Teen Replica Room. And what that means is that they have a room and they will show you the many different ways that students and adults, and how they hide their drugs, and how you can, how you can find them or look for them. And it also will give you a greater idea of what to look for in personality changes. Again, you know, we always think that alcohol and drugs and opiates and heroin are somewhere else, but in West Dallas, we had 28 fatal overdoses last year, and in 2000, well, that would have been 2015. In 2016, we had 32 fatal overdoses. So it doesn't happen in somebody else's backyard, it happens in ours. So if you have an interest, please attend. The date, once again, is Monday, September 18th, 6 to 8:00 p.m. at Nathan Hale High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Heather?
Next week, if you're looking for somewhere to dine out, Buffalo Wild Wings on Highway 100 is hosting West Dallas Central PTSA. Anytime you go, just say you're there for West Dallas Central, and they'll give us a portion of proceeds.
Thank you.
Right now, through September 1st, Menchie's, the new frozen yogurt place on National Avenue, is having a hout and about fundraising for Wilson PTA. So there's a flyer that's available on the Wilson PTA Facebook page, or if you contact me, I'll be happy to send you one, and you can go there and have some nice treats here before we get the school year rolling.
Healthy treats.
Healthy treats.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have three items on there this evening. 9.1, the approval of the August 14 regular Board meeting, and the August 21th District Leadership Retreat. 9.2, the employment summary on supplemental contracts, and 9.3, the financial summary. Does any Board member need any of those separated?
Financial summary, please.
Sure. Anyone else? Okay, we'll take 9.1 and 9.2 together, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Those first two passed. 9.3, no.
I just had a question. I know I asked Andy Krung this, and I think someone was looking at, but I just noticed for all of the schools, there was absolutely no electrical or gas charges listed for the financial summary this time. I know that schools in session, thus they should be lower, but I presume there's still some charges, the lights are on on the outside at the very least.
Yes, sure, we're still using electricity and gas and some of those things, but in terms of the billing cycles, it's probably what this relates to.
Yeah, I asked Jessica Spencer, she should not get back to me today, but I presume it's simply when bills came in first and last. They were paid, they don't typically come in always on the 25th of the month or the 1st, they run their normal cycle, and we may have paid them, two days after we got them versus normally paying them the next day, but I don't have a definitive answer at this time, but gas or electricity is on, gas is running, and all those things are working.
Very good. All right, thank you. That's all I had.
Anyone else have a question on that? Okay, motion to approve, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Final questions or comments? None. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Financial summary passes. We'll move on to action items. We have two this evening. First one, 10.1, Board Policy Number 342.5, Title I School-Wide Services. This is a second reading. Mr. Engelen, Ms. DeJah.
So this is coming forward for a second reading. As you guys know, we didn't have any questions or modifications after the first reading. This was a, basically, redraft of the old policy based on some of the new language in the ESBA, and it's coming forward again for the second read.
Any questions for DeJah? Sue.
I do have a question. On page 3 of 3, item E, you have, "Opportunities will be provided for parents, family members to formulate suggestions, interact and share experiences with other parents, family members, and participate in the decision-making of all programs and revisions of the plan." Do you have a plan on how you're going to do that?
Some of that comes through the parent information nights that they have, they're sponsored by Title, so that comes through the parent literacy night, where they get feedback from families, or the math nights, those sorts of things, and then each school works with, sometimes it's the PTA, or their common, like a school advisory board, committee, I should say, not a board, to get some feedback around those things.
So there is a plan?
Yep. It primarily comes through the literacy, all those literacy and math nights that buildings host are all part of their plan to implement the Title I.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, motion to approve, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Last chance for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. 10.1 passes. We'll go on to 10.2, the Board Policy Number 345.6, Graduation Requirements, and 345.6 Rule for Graduation Responsibilities, Early Graduation and Credit Recovery, and this also is a second reading.
So this was the one where we modified parts of the original policy to put some of it into rule, as there's a few other things around credit recovery and that will need some updates, as well as it gives us some flexibility to update those rules around early graduation without coming back and amending the full Board policy. So we separated out the graduation requirements and then put the other requirements into the rule, as well as updating the early graduation requirements to be far more specific, so that they can have a clear understanding for the buildings and exactly what students would need to do in order to be considered for early graduation.
Questions? Noah?
I know I emailed this to DeJah, I just have an issue with the GPA requirement. For something that is early graduation, or as we're saying, this student is so ready for the outside world and what they're going to do next, that we're going to let them go early. But to have such a low GPA require, I mean allowable, such a low GPA, I know it's tied to WIA standards, but, I mean, I think that's for an average student, a student that is going through the full coursework and going through all the education and normal time period versus someone who's doing it in expedited fashion. I just really have an issue using 1.5 as that GPA.
Do you want to go ahead and address that?
Sure. Yeah, there's, picking that alignment to WIA, we kind of need to set the bar somewhere. This being the first go in establishing the rule, that's just what we kind of kept in mind with, because that's what's in line with our participation for sports at the high schools. I looked out into some other schools as to what they do, if they adjust, and read some of the WIA policy, and you can adjust it, I mean, not that we're using WIA as kind of our benchmark for this, but I just try to keep it consistent with that WIA participation rule for both of the high schools.
And we discussed the fact that we thought in committee, that we thought a 1.5 GPA certainly isn't where we would want students to be for early graduation, but we've never had a marker in the rule before, nor the policy before, and so we were looking for a place to start and decided to align it with our WIA participation rules, knowing that we could amend it if we needed to.
Any other questions by Board members? Heather?
I'll just make a comment, but I do know, I mean, at our high schools, especially if a child is looking at early graduation, they're, the reality is, they're probably going to be an excelled student, it's not going to be someone who's struggling and doing credit recovery, it's going to be someone who, "I need a half a credit in English and I want to be moving on to college by December." That's probably more what we're looking at, so.
And, you know, last year, some of the applications were a little all over the board, which is why we felt it was important to come forward with some kind of restrictions on it and some requirements to it. And so, but typically, who you would see for early graduation would be, very rarely will it be students who are sitting at a 1.5 GPA.
You mentioned this is, can be amended going forward, so with that, is there going to be data provided so we can look at it again and see kind of where people fell? And, okay.
DeJah, we talked a little bit in committee about your department working with students to try to steer them away from graduating early. Though this looks on paper like it's just a bunch of detail checklist, that that's really not what you're after, and I think you might want to share just a little bit of that, because this is coming forward because of your concern that we have allowed it to be too easy to leave the district.
Yeah, I can certainly address that. I think some of the applications for Adam and I in our first year of reviewing early graduation applications, we were quite surprised at the caliber of some of the students and their profile, that they were looking to graduate early. And many of the students, Adam went and interviewed each one of the students, and some of them had very clearly articulated post-secondary plans and movement towards those post-secondary plans, and those are the students that you're referring to, Heather, they really were ready to graduate early. We had other students who had never taken advantage of an opportunity to take one of our CTE courses, and they didn't really have a clearly articulated plan, so those are students that Adam went and met with, and we met with some of the families to say, "This is why we wouldn't encourage you to graduate early at this time, because if you don't know what you want to be, high school is a prime time to take some of our elective courses and figure some of that out." So for us, after going through that process for the first year, we wanted to put something in place that really talked about whether or not the student had a post-secondary plan that they could articulate, and they had made motion towards doing, in order for us to say, you know, that's our whole strategic plan, are we graduating students who are ready? And some of the applications that came across our desk last year, we would not have said those students were ready to go out into the world and be ready to face the challenges it comes with. So we wanted some things put in place into the rule now, at the time we were talking about it as part of the policy, so that we could make sure that the students who are leaving us, whether they leave us at the end of four years or whether they leave us at three and a half, could really articulate a plan and demonstrate that they were ready to go out and achieve some of what they put into their plan.
Other questions? And you look like you're ready for it.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. I just want to say a little bit about what Brian had mentioned. Would the Board feel comfortable or more comfortable having what Brian said involved in this reading in regards to requirements that we can look at it at a later date?
That's a question for the rest of That's a question for the rest of the board. I mean, part of the reason that we separated those out into a rule was that, again, it gives us some flexibility without coming back forward for a whole, you know, policy revision, in order to make some of the changes that we want to, to the rule, and so without the full policy adoption. So that is why we put some of that in the rule, because it does provide us with some flexibility to make those changes. And so, but that's really a question for the board, if there needs to be language in there, that the policy can be reviewed and the rules can be reviewed at any time, that's kind of standard for policies.
Would my fellow board members feel comfortable with that?
Why don't we see what happens with students as we especially approach January, and what kind of response we're getting now that we've tightened this up, so that if we need to make a change next spring before the following year, we can do that again, and where there's grade point or certain requirements you're going to ask, we can look at that and revise it if necessary.
I will tell you that if we get twenty-five applicants who all have a one point five two GPA, we'll be looking back at their requirements to figure out whether or not they were stringent or not. Got it.
I'd like to hear that.
All of the other things that are in the requirements, the GPA requirement is less concerning to Adam and I from some of what we saw last year than some of the other things that students didn't have in their profile, that we felt it was our ethical obligation to provide to them while they were still in their free and appropriate public education, and encourage them to take advantage of what we are offering at our high schools, because we offer some fantastic things that do a great job at getting students to be ready to go out and leave us. So to have students wanting to leave us before they had experienced some of those things, for Adam and I, we just weren't comfortable with that, that's not the experience we'd want for our own kids.
So in the rule, we do know that the requests for early graduation are due by October first. So theoretically, you'll be getting these applications within, you know, a month from now. So the first board meeting after October first could be part of the board update, that you received seven requests for early graduation, three of them were, you know, approved, two of them were, you know, three of them were denied, what have you. We could get that data very, very quickly, and if we had to move on something, we could do it very quickly as well.
Yep.
So it was only a month from now.
I'm comfortable with that, as long as it's in the minutes, I'm fine.
Sure.
Sounds good. Motion to approve this one? So moved. Thank you. Second?
Second.
We've had our discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Now's the time for suggestions for future agenda and/or workshop suggestions.
I have one. I have been involved in some communication with families in the school that my kids go to, and I've taught, learned about smaller fam, other schools where they have before school care for the students. And right now, it's, there's nothing that's district-wide, it's kind of individual school. But I would like to see about broaching, maybe looking at if the rec department could hold something like that, like they do with Action three thirty with after-school care, and see if that could be something that we could look into, look at cost-benefit analysis and interest.
How about, as opposed to a workshop or agenda, how about we direct that to Dan Recreation Services, and at your next committee meeting, throw it out that there's a concern by a board member on that?
That's fine. We, we have in the past discussed that, as far as cost.
Maybe you can give us something on where you're at.
No, no, I, I think, I think what you're saying there, Jeff, is great, and I don't have a problem, nor does Bill discussing that with.
Because that seems like a logical place to start.
Exactly, I agree with you.
If, if for some reason they can't, us having a workshop on it is.
Yeah, I agree. We can do that, right, Bill?
Yep.
Okay. We're meeting on, what, Tuesday, aren't we?
Twenty-sixth of September.
At five o'clock, so.
Well, is it okay in the future?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else on any subject?